The Troy City Council Special Budget Meeting Study Session is called to order April 25, 2011, and Mrs. Bartholomew may we have the roll call.
Mayor Schelling.
Here.
Councilwoman Bellamy.
Fleming.
Here.
Harlock.
Here.
Turwen.
Here.
McGuinness.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Form President.
There.
Councilwoman Fleming.
Resolved that the Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilwoman Robert Bellamy at the City Council's special study session of May of April 25, 2011 due to being out of town.
Court. Moved by Councilwoman Fleming, separated by the Chair, that we excuse Councilwoman Robert Bellamy being out of town. Discussion? The vote, Mr. Bartholomew.
Mayor Schelling.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fleming.
Yes.
Harlock.
Yes.
Turwen.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Motion passes. Tonight is our proposed fiscal year 2011-2012 annual budget and the three-year budget. And tonight, we're going to have an overview of the 2011-12 budget, including the general fund, the internal services funds, special revenue funds, and the debt service funds. Ms. Turner-Light?
If you don't mind, you can indicate what we're doing for the balance of the sessions, and you can take care of the slide for me.
Okay, if you want me to. All right, May 2nd, we're doing capital projects, enterprise funds, and the three-year budget. Then, May 9th, we're having the wrap-up, and May 16th is the public hearing and the adoption of the budget, which we must do by that date for the 2011-2012.
Thank you, Your Honor. If I could add one thing to the May 9th wrap-up, and that would be to make a decision on the disposition of the Troy Public Library. You'll have essentially all of the information for this year's budget, for the next three fiscal years, as well as our capital programming, both of you will have all the information you need to make a decision. May I hear that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And, Dane, do you want to read our vision?
Sure.
Thank you.
Our vision: To honor the legacy of the past and build a strong, vibrant future to be attractive place to live, work, and grow business.
Thank you. Martin, do you mind reading the goals for us?
Provide a safe, clean, and livable city. Provide effective and efficient local government. Build a sense of community. Attract and retain business investment.
Thank you. You get a break for a while, Wade and Mary, Maureen.
Organization.
I'll take this one.
It's getting pretty short.
The, as you know, City Council had the foresight to hire an independent third-party to take a look at the organization where management did not get to at a certain point in time, to make sure that it would be the most efficient and cost-effective operation going. And what ICMA did was essentially flatten the organization into five clusters, and I think there's a ... Oh, geez, I'm sorry, I turned the thing off. Okay. All right, where's the phaser?
Top red button.
Oh, the top red button. Ah, okay, thank you. The, I'm going to start with my office. The city manager now essentially has three positions that are essentially full-time for the city manager: myself, the assistant to the city manager, which is Monica, and the manager office coordinator, which is Beth Tashnick. And what ICMA recommended for those positions is that I used to have an assistant to the manager, Mary Redden, did an excellent job for us, and she was primarily what's called executive support, and helped me in the day-to-day operations with the agenda materials. I heard that I'm ahead of the trend because people no longer read emails, and I've not read emails for years, but Mary would read all my emails, do minor responses, and was totally executive support. ICMA recommended that I hire someone within the same pay grade with a master's degree and make that more of a managerial support, and essentially use that position as a director or coordinator of continuous improvement. And so, thanks to also the e-RIP program, the Early Retirement Incentive Program that Council adopted, the, Mrs. Redden retired early, and I was able to make these changes in my office, and essentially have Beth Tashnick now perform the executive function. Monica does the managerial policymaking functions with me. And in the long run, in terms of a balance sheet, it's cheaper to run it in that fashion. So that's my office. I'm going to jump around now. I'm going to go to the finance and administrative services area, which is Mr. Lamorato. And John, in addition to being an assistant city manager, I'm down to one now, he also has the task of coordinating and being a super department head, in addition to his duties as assistant manager, of finance, accounting, treasurer, risk management, purchasing, information technology assessing as well. We added, or ICMA recommended adding, the clerks office and human resources to the finance and administrative services mix because Peggy's department in HR and Tony's department in the clerks office, as well as Susan Leerstine's department in purchasing, essentially had so many people reduced because of the reduction in staffing over the next couple of years that they would become unsustainable. And so, John is now charged with cross-training employees and his entire cluster to make sure that we can deliver services in all of the areas in his cluster. And everybody has a hard job in the city of Troy, but the five people that report to me have a harder job because they are responsible, along with myself, to make sure that we reach fruition in terms of the ICMA goals. Next, we have here, oh, one more thing. You'll see that library-museum is in red. Red means expunged. Of course, we'll find out if it stays red or if it's a regular color. It's part of the charts, May 9th. I also had an assistant manager in Mark Miller, and unlike John, Mark has been totally redeployed to be the Director of Economic and Community Development. And, excuse me. Mark's areas are building inspection, which has been entirely privatized. At one point, we had 24 full-time people, and now we have zero. At one point, in accordance with audit reports, if you took revenues that came in for permits for the building department against departmental expenditures, we were in the hole, $5 million. In other words, the way that we used to operate cost the taxpayers, if you will, $5 million to support the building department in the traditional sense, and just about every other city in the state of Michigan still has that traditional way of managing their building department. It was depressing and unfortunate that we had to let go of everybody in that department. And Safebuilt, a company that has over 100 municipal clients around the United States, took the work, and they did it without raising permit fees. So, the builder and the homeowner that wants to make an improvement saw no increase in their fees, and they, being Safebuilt, are taking 80% of the permit fees and remitting back to the city 20%. So we went essentially from having a department that was a consumer of general tax dollars to one that's not a donor per se, because we have other expenses, but a department that no longer requires a donation from the general fund. Engineering, there was a great effort by Steve Van Dett, our city engineer, and Bill Houdery, our deputy city engineer. They started out in the hole because about a year and a half ago, we had private sector engineering firms talk to John Lamorato, Mark Miller, and myself, and they told us that if we just laid off everybody in those departments, we could save 40%. And so that's where Steve Van Dett and Bill Houdery started, based upon the capital project program that we have, about $100 million every six years that we expend on water, sewer, and streets primarily, and the way that projects have to be managed from an engineering professional perspective, and also looking at the actual hourly rate for existing contracts that we have. Mr.'s Van Dett and Houdery proved that we now have the optimum mix of in-house engineers and outside consultant engineering firms. And to proof of the puddings and the tasting, then you could add any project, throw that project against the rates from the firms that we currently have, and we are cheaper. Isn't that correct, Steve?
Correct.
So thank you very much for that endeavor. Unfortunately, too, we had to lay off about half of the entire engineering department staff to reach that optimum balance, but we made that accomplishment. The planning department, we had five people in planning. We're now down to two, so that's a 60% reduction essentially, and we do have a part-time consultant coming in a couple of half-days a week to pick up the slack. Mark also is a certified planner, so he lends assistance in that regard. Economic development. ICMA said that they were concerned with the shortage of staff, both in the manager's office as well as in this cluster, that we'll be able to make a very positive endeavor, but we're going to do what we can. Unfortunately, we're down to one person in that department, Pam Valenteck, and she took a job for another community. And so, Mark and John are going to decide how to handle that position. Community affairs, we're down essentially to Cindy Stewart, who now reports for Mark and used to report to me. And recreation took a huge blow. We currently have 34 full-time employees because of the objective that we have to make recreation programs essentially be self-sustaining. In other words, there'll be no general fund subsidy for recreation programs with the exception of the debt service or bond payment to the community center. We're going from 34 full-time people down to six full-time people. So Mark also has a tough job, along with Stu Alderman, to make that work. In addition, we had a super director of parks and recreation for a very long time, Carol Anderson, who essentially took an early retirement to try to save some jobs in managerial area, and she did. When Carol Anderson retired, I promoted Stu Alderman, who was the recreation superintendent, and that position's been expunged essentially to be in charge of recreation, and then bifurcated the department. Now I'm going to slide over to public works. And so Parks is now in public works, and Recreation is in Economic and Community Development. And this has already happened. These are recommendations made by ICMA. They said we should implement this within six months to two years. We implemented it in about two months. So, with park maintenance, the final draft is also going to combine Streets, Drains, and Parks as one unit. And so we're going to take two areas that each had a superintendent and have one superintendent, so that's an elimination of another managerial position. Again, Tom Rosborn, who did a great job for us as superintendent of Streets and Drains, took the early retirement program, and we slid Jeff Bigler from Parks to also take over Streets and Drains. And Tim will be working primarily with Jeff to make sure that Jeff gets up to speed in that area as well. Tim and I also have the misfortune of being a direct report to me because he used to report to Mark. That was also a recommendation of ICMA, and that was primarily because of Council's objective to essentially protect the core competencies of police, fire, and infrastructure maintenance. ICMA thought those core competencies should be a direct report to myself, and Tim and I have a lot of work to do in terms of trying to find the most cost-efficient and effective manner to deliver those services. One thing else that ICMA did was to say that all maintenance functions, whether it be a car, or a park, or a street, or a building, should be under the Director of Public Works, who is Tim Richnack. And so in the past, where building operations, which is run very, very well, excellently by Steve Pilata, used to report to John, that has been slid over now to be part of the maintenance function. And so everything to do with maintenance is under one roof, if you will. And we now need to take a look at processes to try to become as efficient and effective as we can be. And speaking of processes, fleet maintenance. We now have, I think it's 11, Sam, do we have 11 in-service, or in-sourcing customers? And that's thanks primarily to Sam Lamorato, and I knocked on a few doors myself, I think Tim did as well, but it's mostly Sam who went out and got the customers for us. And because when we reduce the workforce, which we have done drastically so far, we also reduce the steel and iron that go with the personnel, and so we reduce the number of vehicles that we have. And we had a choice to lay off the associated number of mechanics in the motor pool, or to see if we could in-source, try to achieve an economy of scale, and save everybody some money, including the city of Troy. And so we didn't, you know, even though we had layoffs in a reduction in staff in many areas, our fleet department actually grew customers, and so we're very proud of that effort. And please keep it up, Sam. Police element, the police element is a tough one. The, ICMA needed about two more months for the balance of departments to take a look at their recommendations, but essentially they made recommendations indicating that with all the layoffs coming up, if we added back four people from our option-one layoffs, we'd have a functional police department. And we'll get into that more and more as time goes on. We do have a committee going to tag both chiefs and Tim to join us, and the committee is made up primarily, at this point, of John and Mark, Peggy, Susan Leerstine, our purchasing director, and myself. And we look at every department to see what the most cost-efficient way is to run it. And with Monica as our Director of Continuous Improvement, if you will, she is next going to look at building operations as well as lockup facilities in the police department. Fire department, ICMA fell in love with the fire department, and a comment that Chief Nelson made to me years and years ago that's always stuck with me, is I was not complaining, but I was talking about having seven labor contracts or five labor contracts come in at a certain point in time, and Bill says, "Well, John, you know, with 160 volunteers, like about 160 separate labor contracts that I have to manage because they're all volunteers, and Bill does a great job in managing that part of it." As you know or may not know in the audience, we have a volunteer fire department, and the fire department essentially has two parts. It has a suppression part, which is throwing water on the building, and it has a prevention part, which is the inspections and the administration and the management. And our suppression part is totally volunteer. 162 volunteers last year did 19,000 hours of training. We also have a career element of, is it 11 full-time people now, Bill?
10.
10. 10, okay. And if you compare the cost of our fire department with any other department of a city our size, we're saving about $14 to $16 million. And that's worth about $4 million bucks in Troy. Okay. I'm not going to read all of these, but for the past many years, we've initiated cost-saving measures to be good stewards of the tax dollars that come in to the city of Troy. And the ones that have importance and a lot of savings attached to it are that we eliminated traditional Blue Cross/Blue Shield for new hires, started that in 1992, and it's now widespread amongst all of our new employees, in current employees. We eliminated longevity for new hires. In 1993, we started doing that. The big one is that we've replaced a defined benefit with a defined contribution, and we started doing that in 1997. And as you know, a defined benefit pension system is one that has a legacy cost, and a defined contribution system has no legacy cost. And a defined contribution plan, you're going to take a portion of someone's salary, and you put that away on their behalf, and the employee also makes a contribution, and when they retire, whatever that lump of cash is, they take that with them. And based on their investments, they can determine what kind of retirement they have from the city of Troy. And we now have about 75% of our entire workforce in defined contribution. Many cities have less than 5%. Some cities have none of their employees in defined contribution. They're still in defined benefit. We also no longer offer retiree healthcare benefits to new hires across the board. So when someone comes in now, I mean, to make a comparison, let me take a state trooper. The state trooper goes to work for the state of Michigan, and they get retiree healthcare out of the chute, and they get a defined benefit plan out of the chute, and they get a raise every year. Police officer in Troy has no retiree healthcare, no defined benefit plan, and we're trying to get concessions. And we've achieved some concessions with the commit offices. So that's the difference between us and the state of Michigan, just in that one element. And ICMA indicated that we are ahead of the curve in terms of employee concessions and best practices, and they have about 9,000 clients to draw from.
John?
Yes?
State has a defined contribution plan for new hires. The state has a DC plan for new hires?
No, the state has a DB plan for state police.
Only state police, right. I just want to make sure that we understand that it's only that unit.
All right. My example was state police, and that's what I used. We also have some expenditure highlights, and again, I'm not going to read this chart, but this shows essentially what we've done with each employee group thus far in terms of furlough days, payroll savings costs for health insurance and longevity, wage freezes, and our objective that we have is to achieve for all groups a 10% savings in payroll, which is defined as base wage and salary, FICA, workers' comp, and pension costs. This slide actually should indicate what services are or will no longer be provided. And it starts out with the police protection in local schools. This is Chief Mayor's here, and there's a lot of services that will no longer be provided by the police department. If you don't mind, Chief, if you could articulate what we are no longer going to provide or no longer provide now in your element, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly. This comes from what the ICMA recommendations are. They wanted us to reduce services. They'll be both immediate in the form of eliminating police response to calls in the long term, in the form of a diminished capacity to investigate criminal incidents in organizations. That means we're going to eventually, by 2013, eliminate response to routine analyst requests, eliminate response to an annual average of 2,100 property damage motor vehicle accidents. 25% of those incidents are accidents that require a tow truck. We haven't quite figured out how we're going to do that yet. Eliminate response to animal control calls, we've already done that. They want us to establish a burglary, a B&amp;E alarm reduction program to reduce response to the average annual 3,000 B&amp;E alarms. They want us to eliminate the traffic safety unit, that's eight police officers and two supervisors. Adopt a generalist approach to all our activities as opposed to a specialist approach. That means we'll be reducing or eliminating canines, evidence technicians. It's going to eliminate the school resource officers, eliminate traffic control officers, traffic safety officers rather, and we're going to eliminate or reduce our computer crimes abilities. We're going to transfer community services to operations. They want us to recall and reassign officers assigned to narcotics enforcement team, drug enforcement agency, and immigration customs enforcement, and eliminate the juvenile unit, reassign those duties back to regular investigations. Those are items that'll occur staggered over the next three years.
Thank you, Chief. Also on the list for the departments are fiber education programs for businesses. No removal on county roads, will be a huge challenge, Tim. Events like the Troy Day Festivals, and over 100 recreation programs, including youth and adult volleyball, adult basketball, flag football, floor hockey, adaptive field trips and dinner clubs, smart ticket sales, and many senior programming, and programming at the library, nature center, and museum. This essentially is a trend line, and it trends over the past several years, revenues and expenditures. The revenue line is the lighter blue line with the square, and the expenditure line is the darker blue line with a diamond shape. And whenever you see the expenditure line over the revenue line, quite simply, like an area in here, you have to make up that difference from another source. And we make up that difference with concurrence of council by the use of fund balance. And so this coming budget year, as well as the next two years, we're projecting a deficit, if you will, in terms of looking at our expenditures over revenues, even with all the cuts that As your manager, I'm supposed to be dispassionate and totally objective in making any presentation, but this slide, pretty much, I find depressing. It shows our full-time people that we had, starting in 2006, which was our peak, at 485. This fiscal year, we'll be at 341, and then going down two years after that to 306. This fiscal year will be at 341 and then going down two years after that to 306. And that's about 144 people, I think, from 341 to 485. If you take a look at our low point that we're projecting, even this year, that's about a little over a quarter of a million staff hours of services annually that were no longer provided. And senior management, myself, we know all these people. And those that don't take advantage of the ERA program or leave by attrition or find another job, we lay them off. We lay them off every year. When times were good, back in essentially the 60s, 70s, 80s, and 90s, we could do what was called more with more. We had a tax base that was booming. We had revenue coming in that exceeded our expenditures. We added a fund balance every year and we were able to go from providing essentially generalized service to specialized service and customer service to customized service. We did more, we had more people, so we could do more with more. Then when we started to have a cut in personnel, we still did more, but we had to do more with less. Then we went into an area of doing the same amount with less and that was the area that we're in probably up until this coming fiscal year. And the way it was explained to me by Craig Rapp, the director of consulting for ICMA, is that he said that that staff here was like a rubber band and it was pretty much stretched to what it could sustain. And with any more cuts, you then had to look at just cutting services. And so we call that doing less with less to coin Craig Rapp's terminology. One of the negative externalities of downsizing an organization like this is that even people that are budgeted to remain sometimes feel a need to leave. We lost Barbara Palata, who was deputy city clerk, who did a great job for us and she went to Independence Township. Her position was budgeted. We lost Pam Valenteck, the economic development specialist, to Rochester Hills for about the same money. We lost a mechanic, this surprised me, we lost a mechanic in Sam's department to go, where did it go?
Cable TV. Cable television.
Work on their vehicles, okay. And so we're up now against that as well. And it makes our job even tougher to try to attract and retain very good and talented Here's the full-time employees per thousand population that we've had over the years from 2000 to 2012. It's a manifestation of doing less with less. And I'm actually in a friendly argument with my own association because I think that the benchmark they use on employees per capita is misleading for cities that have a large commercial industrial base like the city of Troy has. We have over 100,000 people that come to work every day. You can compare this figure against a town that's totally a suburb of a city that doesn't have, without too many jobs, and yet they would have a lower full-time employees per thousand population than we would. These are people essentially that sleep here. My recap, we're reducing 47 full-time positions. These are budgeted. Some of these positions are already gone because the budget was developed as management, we still rolled on to take a look at what was more cost efficient and effective. And so even before the budget was implemented, we had made certain cuts to departments. So the bill in the department's already gone, those six. City clerk's office, we lost one. And again, I'm not going to indicate all the positions, but you can take a look at it at your convenience, it goes on for the next several pages, positions that we're Also, there was a reduction in part-time positions. And if you have no questions of me, I'll turn this over to Mr. Lamrahan.
May I have a question? It's to one of your earliest slides, Mr. Lamrahan. When you asked for the goals to be read out loud as they were suggested by Councilman Harrell, one of them is to provide effective and efficient local government. If you look at slide six, I believe, you iterated a number of the cost savings measures. And although this is all redundant really for us, because we know that, one thing that came out in the statistically significant survey was that people, whatever way we were communicating, isn't necessarily getting out. I'm wondering if you might consider using what they suggested, which would be Troy Times, to get out just some did you know pieces, not long, not when did, but simply to begin hammering home some of the things that have been going on here for a long time. I would just like to say that I know that there's a lot of good news to share about Troy and yet we know from reading the paper, not our local papers, which we appreciate, but from papers, that there's really just this long going on and on about things that seem to be a little bit off. For example, at our last meeting, really some remarkable things were done, which really do go to the goals that we set and some of the things in here. Would you consider doing a did you know, just some bullet points that could be put in the Troy Times or in some of our other local papers?
That's an excellent idea. It was also brought to our attention by Councilwoman McGinnis. And to that end, Cindy Stewart had contacted a reporter at Troy Times and the publisher is on a two-week vacation. That would be up to the publisher. If the publisher says yes, we'll be happy to have a weekly update, if you will, of what's going on in Troy. If I recall, the Troy Times had a 30% penetration, according to the survey, of how people in Troy get their information, so that would be the paper to go to. In the alternative, it would cost about $400 a week if we had to pay for that service. So we're going to first try to see if we can get the publisher to agree to have that as a public service, indicate what's happening in Troy once a week. So yes, the answer is yes. We'll know in a couple of weeks.
Or any of the good things that come out of a meeting, you know, that would be good to hear out there. But these are, we know about them, yet there's some buzz out there in the community, who knows why, that the employees aren't, and this is something that's been going on for years and years here.
Over a year ago, I asked Cindy to, and she did this, she followed through to contact all the reporters and I was willing to meet with them every two weeks about any topic they wanted to meet. And we didn't get too much wheels on that. We'll try to resurrect that again.
But the other thing we need to be aware of though, when we, if we would do that with the Troy Times, they're usually a week delayed from when it's our meeting. The other thing is we've been putting out information in the Troy Today, which comes out quarterly, but unfortunately, I've heard from people that they receive that, they put it in their recycle bin, they don't even read it. And so it's unfortunate, but I think we need to continue sending out information and hopefully we can get more people to read it and be aware of the kinds of things that, you know, to be educated.
Mr. Lamrahan? Before we get into the budget document, I just wanted to thank Beth Passion at Monica Ireland, other managers' office, for assisting in putting this document together. Spent quite a bit of time on going through it, reviewing it, assembling it. As you may notice, it's quite a bit scaled back from our previous budgets that we've, award-winning previous budgets that we've had before. Due to our concerns of providing a budget document in the most cost-effective manner, we've used recycled notebooks. It's no color, it's all in black and white. We reduced the number of pages in the document. And we still believe that we've utilized our financial software a little bit more to provide some of the reports that are in there instead of a lot of work that was needed to format and so forth. So the whole look is quite a bit different than in the past. We didn't really get into a lot of performance measurements since we just changed and had new goals. We haven't really brought it up with council yet on what some of the objectives would be to, you know, try to obtain those goals. So we may bring that back in next year's budget, once we get that settled during this next year, tied into our new goals and the vision, look at some performance measurements by departments, but we took that out. So we will not be submitting this budget to the GFOA for their consideration. For the first time in over 12 years, we received an award 12 years in a row. This document, just because it's scaled back by over 100 and some pages, does not have all the information to submit it that would be considered for that award. The budget is an operations guide, a financial plan, communication device that integrates outcomes and resources, identifies the budget policies. Just want to stress that this budget is a financial plan. For the second year, we've also prepared a three-year budget to go along with this for city council's approval. And the budget does lay the framework to account for all our activities of the city. Take a look at some of the expenditure highlights, looking from comparing 2011-12 to the 2010-11 budget. General fund budget is down 5.6% or $3.2 million. Capital fund is down 10.7% or $3 million. And all the other funds are down 3.6% or $2 million. In total budget, we had, for 2011-12, is a little over $133 million. Combined, that's 5.8% less than the current year's budget. Once again, some of the highlights, $3.2 million, 5.6% decrease in general fund budget. We have a capital projects fund of $25 million. Our debt service includes servicing all the voter-approved millage fund issues. We do account, again, for every employee, wage and benefits tracks each individual by department and benefit level. And we have that expanded capital section that talks about the operational costs and Some of the key trends and issues of the general fund overview, we've had to reappropriate fund balance, amount of $2.2 million for this current year budget. That compares to the current year, we re-appropriated $2.4 million. We have, we're estimating we'll have unreserved, undesignated fund balance of $10.1 million or 18.5% of the general fund budget at June 3 at 11:00. And I want to stress that this is an estimate. The final amounts will not be known until the audit is completed. Thirty-six of the 47 full-time positions that were eliminated either through retirement or layoffs or come from the general fund. We're transferring, again, $300,000 from our budget stabilization fund. And this year, we've also transferring $1.5 million from our capital projects fund. This is the first of two years that we will be, we've scheduled transfers from our capital projects fund to delay police department reductions. There's a $2.2 million transfer scheduled for 2012-13 budget. We talked about this last year during budget discussions where we canceled various projects in the capital projects fund, such as civic center improvements, trail system, and park development funding, and reallocated those funds to be transferred back to the general fund to push back the reductions in public safety. So not only are we relying on fund balance, $2.2 million, we're also relying on $1.5 million of the capital projects fund to balance the budget. And these are one-time, the capital project is two years we have it, but after that, there's no funding available for that. So it's a one-time transfer this year and next year. Where the city gets its revenue, we have federal, state, and local returns makes up 9.8% of our general fund budget versus 9.3% last year for the current year. Fines and forfeits shares, 1.9% of the budget versus 2.1% in the current year. License and permits projected to go up to 2.7% of the budget from 1.9. Property taxes, 55.3% of the budget versus a current year of 56.4. Interest and rents stay about the same, 2% of the budget. Other revenue and financing sources, 17.2% versus 15.9. And charges for services, 11.1% versus 12.4 in the current year. We'll talk a little more about each of those categories. So just to do a recap, only if you look at that, you see a lot of red there too, is only licenses and permits and operating transfers in reflect an increase in revenue from the current year. All other sources of revenue to the general fund have a decrease. When you look at, you total that up, it's 81.3% of our general fund revenue has gone down from the current year. Makes up 81.3% of our revenue. Taxes, due to taxable value decrease, again, have a 7.54% reduction and it makes up, once again, 55.25% of the budget. License and permits shows an increase. The building and trade permit activity has increased this year and you can see in our budget that we're projecting an increase this year and a carryover into next year. Federal, state, and local sources have gone down almost 1%. We had some public safety grant reductions. Library fines from the county that are remitted to us, that's out of the budget. And state shared revenue actually has a small increase compared to the current year. Charges for services are down 15.36%. Our recreation charges, the museum, community center, all cutbacks in those areas are the main reductions there. Interest and rents, basically investment income shows a reduction to make up that portion of it. Other revenue sources, not a big dollar amount, but it's almost a 7% reduction is from museum contributions. Operating transfers in shows an increase of 3.44%. That's because of the capital projects fund adjustment or transfer in this year. That's also offset by some reductions in other transfers in from other funds. So you can see, we have, what we have to contend with here are basically almost all our sources of revenue are declining from year to year. Take a look at the net taxable valuation. Once again, a lot of red on this chart also. You can see the current year for 2011, we have a total net taxable value of almost $4.4 billion. That's come down from about $4.7 billion for the current year. Real property's gone down 7.1%, personal 4% reduction, overall 6.8%. We've used, in our budget, 8.2% reduction in this source of revenue. We have over $137 million of Michigan tax tribunal cases that are outstanding right now in value. That does not include any of the 2011 cases. What happens to that, if it's, some of those go, take several years to work their way through the system, but what happens is that going back, those all, then they carry forward that new value to the current years. And the ones that are settled for less amount, those show up as an expenditure in our income statement. And any current year ones that affect the current year shows reduction in tax revenue. So we backed off our estimate for net taxable value revenue to account for that. Personal property, again, has decreased each year for the past 10 years. Taking what our net taxable value, 2008 was our peak. We reached a $4.8 billion in real taxable value. For 2011, we're down to about 4.0, $800 million loss in real taxable value. Personal property, once again, we peaked in 2002 and we're at about $362 million right At $362 million, at our current tax proposed tax rate, and not At $362 million, at our current tax proposed tax rate of 9.49 mils, that's equivalent to $3.4 million. And though there is talk still in Lansing about eliminating, eliminating the personal property tax. Now, they said there may be some kind of replacement revenue for some of that, but we'll have to see what happens. That still is a topic of discussion right now. So we have a $3.4 million out there that could also be affected if the state and the governor goes through in some of those changes. Taxable value as a percentage of assessed value, 2011, our taxable value was equal to 98 percent, well, over 98 percent of our assessed value. What that means, basically, is that this current year, there's a 1.7 percent CPI adjustment for any property that was under the assessed value. Well, even if there is an increase in the future years, it'll be so little, it means so little to us because we're already at, we'll be at 98, next year it'll probably be close to 99, close to 100 percent. Assessed value equals taxable value. So we won't even recognize any of that increase in the CPI. You can't have your taxable value over the assessed value of the property. So we're getting very close to that situation. Total taxable value by class, a 12-year trend. A residential makes up 59 percent of our total taxable value. It's up 1 percent from the current year. Commercial's 32 percent, that's up 2 percent. Industrial's 9 percent, down 3 percent. Seems like, well, commercial made a little pickup there, really didn't, because really it was, the state made some changes to some industrial classes of property, industrial property, and switched those over to commercial. For example, some warehouse, warehouses, if it's strictly a warehouse, they're saying, well, it's really not an industrial use, it's more of a commercial use. So they, they transferred, and this year is the first time they looked at that and they moved some industrial classes to commercial. So there really isn't any increase. It's those two, basically, we picked up one percentage in residential, which we don't want to do, but the other two, basically, kind of the industrial is offset by the commercial. Real estate taxes. The millage rates we have here are estimated for the other taxing jurisdictions. They're going through either now, or they will be going through in the fall with their budget processes. But we're looking at, these are the current rates for 2010-11, that we moved over to 11-12 with an adjusted proposed rate for the city of 9.49 mils. For the city of Troy, based on the average residential property of $96,775, the average residential tax homeowner will pay $918 to the city of Troy. That's a reduction of $45 from the current year, which is, which was a reduction of $151 from the previous year, which was 45, $45 reduction from the year before that. So you add all those up, basically, the average residential home for 2011-12 is paying $241 less in taxes than they did three years ago. Here, once again, just showing what's happened to the average residential city taxes, basically a 21 percent reduction since 2008-9. Real estate taxes by taxing jurisdictions, once again, the city receives 27 cents of each tax dollar collected for city services. We still remain the tax collection agency and assessing agency for all the other taxing jurisdictions. We collect all the taxes, we assess the property for everyone, we receive 27 cents on the dollar. The schools get 55 cents, and the county community college, 18 cents. Okay, this chart, take a little explaining, but it's, this will show you the effects of proposal A, and then what happens when a property has its assessed value equal to its taxable value. So you can see in the black numbers, this, first of all, the first home was roughly a $150,000 market value home back in 2002. Started keeping track of these. And proposal A, the various effects of proposal A are in the black numbers there. Each year, that's the CPI adjustment to that property, as long as the taxable value was under the assessed value. So all the way through those years, each year you had a little increase, whatever the CPI was, each of those years. We got to 2008-9, roughly most of our residential home, the taxable value was equal to the assessed value. So the green numbers now show, once again, you can't have your taxable value more than your assessed value. So the green figures for 2009-10 through 2011-12 show what's happened to the market value of those homes, and shows a reduction each of those years. And for the last year, basically, you went from, with a five, this past year, we had a 5.7 percent average residential reduction. Using a 5 point sub-percent on the 71-709 gets you down to the 67-622 for that home. Their taxes, they paid this current year $674, they're going down to $642 with that reduction. That's if the assessed value is equal to the taxable value. The next home shown there was a $200,000 market value home, 2002, showing you the same numbers, went to black. Once again, our proposal A with the increases, green numbers are in 2008-9, those numbers equaled each other, taxable value, assessed value, what happened to that property. For that property, they're paying $43 less in taxes for this next year than they are this current year. The last home was a $400,000 home in 2002, basically the same scenario there, which shows you what happened in black. Proposal A, green, the market value adjustments, and that home is going to pay $86 less in taxes next year compared to the current year. Summary of the millage requirements. Proposed in the budget for 2011-12, a 9.49 percent millage rate. The only adjustment there is a .09 mil increase for the refuse collection. It's necessary, as we'll talk a little bit more later about the refuse fund, but because of the drop in taxable value and some increases in the refuse collection budget. That show, reflects a 9, 9.09 mil increase. Looking at a 13-year history of the city millage rates, the only net increase has been in the refuse fund the last two years, where actually the rate has, the overall rate has increased, going back the last 13 years. Headly rollback, in our maximum authorized millage. We have, our general operating capital have a combined charter approved amount of $8, 8.10 mils, and that's also our headly maximum authorized millage. The proposed budget is at 8.03, which leaves .07 available. It's six, we have, of 8.03, 6.50 is for the general fund, and 1.53 is for the capital fund. The November 2008 charter amendment lowered our general and capital authorized millage rate from 10 mils to 8.10 mils. And any future headly amendment rollbacks will further reduce the 8.10 mils. We are currently loving, once again, the 8.03 mils of the 8.10, the .07 less. That .07 mils is equal, will equal $302,000 if that were to be restored. Looking at comparison of some surrounding cities and comparable cities' millage rates, we have, we continue to have the lowest tax rate of any full-service city in the region, and possibly the state of Michigan. And even on this chart, Madison Heights and Southfield, which have two of the higher rates, they also have May ballot questions out there to increase their taxes. For library, one for library, one for public safety, one for general services and public safety. Even at the 9.49 proposed millage rate, we're by far the lowest, by, we, by far have the lowest millage rate. Harrison of city tax bills, a similar valued home in each of these cities. And the tax bill, once again, is determined by the rate times the taxable value. So you can't use the average home in another city, what their average residential is. We're looking at the same valued home in each of these cities. No matter what it is, it could be a $100,000 home, it could be 200,000, we have the lowest tax rate, we're automatically the lowest, no matter what you do, we are the lowest city taxes of any city, no matter what you do. So you have to look at the value times the rate, not the average residential value of those different homes in those various cities. So what we did is we took our average taxable value home, 96,775, and applied their various millage rates, city rates, to come up with these numbers here. Madison Heights, $1820 with a May tax ballot question still outstanding. Southfield, 1581 with a May tax ballot questions out there. Down the line, Birmingham, 1452, Rochester Hills, 1235, Sterling Heights, 1228. Farmington Hills is the next closest to the city of Troy, and for the same value home in Troy, you're paying $206 a year less in city taxes in Troy versus Farmington Hills. On the chart, Troy is the only home there, the only city taxes there that's under $1,000. All those homes on a similar valued home. State shared revenue, 2012 is estimated at $5.2 million. That is our constitutional amount. And it's, we have about $400,000 in statutory state shared revenue, which is kind of taken off the table at this point. Revenue source, this revenue source makes up 9.5 percent of our general fund budget. And we're 3.1 million below the 2001 level. And if you look at that, that's the equivalent of .72 mils that we're doing without to make up that difference in revenue from 2001 to our current year. .72 mils. Since 2002, we've lost over $20 million in state shared revenue. We've done this and absorbed that without increasing our taxes, we've absorbed that amount of money. We have not budgeted any additional revenue from this, from this source based on the governor's plan. Governor's plan continues to change, and it's finding out that a lot of things we've already done and have accomplished, if they, we don't get any credit for those. For example, all the privatization and so forth that we've already accomplished, if they're just looking forward, we don't get credit for any of that, which hopefully they'll change their mind on that. Fine contribution, we're already there with all new employees in the DC plan. Concessions, we've already are hitting all the concessions. The dashboard, we have, we've been working on the dashboard, which will be out shortly. Those are some of the requirements, but we're not counting on that money. It could be possibly up to $200,000 to $300,000 more. We're not going to get the full $400,000 that they've taken out. And all the cities in the state, and villages, and counties are going to be vying for those funds, and we're not sure how that's going to work out. And also, they have a timetable on when all these things like 2011, 2012, and so forth, deadlines, which we are still making the push that we've already done. A lot of these things that they're required and not to get credit for any of that seems absurd at this point. So we're, hopefully, we'll get that through to our legislators and have them at least take that into consideration. If not, then we're not, we're not sure if we'll be getting any of that other money. So we'll get the dashboard money, and we'll get some other money, but we continue to privatize, we continue to look at ways to reduce and regionalize and work with other cities, so that's to our benefit, too. We continue to do that, so that should help us out. But, and our, this budget upfront does not include any of the money that may be available if you submit it to the state, and whatever they determine, whether or not you get it or not. I don't like to budget if comes, we like to look at more solid numbers than that. General fund investment income, you know what interest rates are paying, we're kind of restricted to pretty much investments that residents would make themselves, CDs or governmental agencies or commercial paper, those type of things. And the rates are just very low at this point, until we see an uptick there. That revenue source at one time almost, almost generated $2.4 million a year. We're down to $250,000 a year in revenue income. That's also because of our fund balance. Fund balance, you have your cash flow, you have those funds there, that generates your additional investment income. You have a lower fund balance, you don't have those funds that are there reserved, that automatically reduce your fund, your interest income over above that amount. As far as the general fund fund balance, this is a total fund balance for the city in called reservations and undesignated funds. And we're projecting at June 30th, 2011, to have $22.9 million in total fund balance. That's a cumulative result of actual revenues compared to actual expenditures. Each year could be, go up either up or down based on whether or not your revenues are over your expenditures. We are projecting the six, at 6:30-11, expenditures over revenues by a little over $800,000. Unreserved, undesignated fund balance as a percentage of our budget for, at June 30th, 2011, we're looking at having about $10.1 million or 18.5 percent of the general fund The current year, we have $10.7 million, same, and the same 18.5 percent. Fund balance utilization, once again, we're proposing to use $2.2 million of our fund balance compared to $2.4 million in the current year. In our budget policies, we have the unreserved, undesignated fund balance should be in a range between 10 and 17 percent. We're at 10.1. If things work out as they are, at June 30th, we'll be at about 18.5 percent, a little above that range. But I'd like to hold a little judgment on that until we look at the whole three-year budget, because as you'll see, in three years out, we'll be below about 13 percent. So let's keep that in mind while, as we have discussions on this. Kind of covers the general fund revenues up to this point. Any questions on general fund revenues?
John, I have a question. Back on, you don't need to go to the slide, but back on slide 16, or page 16 here, where you talk about real estate taxes, you indicated that the average home has gone down every year for the past three years, and you said it was 200 and...
241.
241. $241 less?
Yes.
Over three years, okay, for the average home. And then, on the slide where you compared us with the other communities, based on a taxable value of almost, almost $97,000, you said that the Troy tax bill was $918. The average compared to those other figures for the other cities?
The closest one is Farmington Hills, which we're still, 200, over $200 less than Farmington Hills, for a similar valued home. And Madison Heights is $900 more than Troy, plus they have some tax questions. I'll bring them a ballot.
Any other questions for Mr. Navarro in this section, while we take a short break? Jasmine Pomer?
We all know we benefit from a voluntary fire department, and you were throwing some numbers around there.
Yes, I said, I think between 14 and 16 million dollars, what we would save if you were to have a full-time department be deployed to essentially cover as much, as many buildings as we have. Sterling Heights, I think is our closest example, and I think Chief Nelson knows that their budget is...
About 16 million.
More than?
16 million total minus our 4.5.
About what we were on?
11.5 million difference.
So, looking at this slide 16, on page 20 that the mayor was referring to, these other comparisons here... these other comparison of city tax bills, do all these cities have full-time fire departments? We know Sterling Heights does, and their tax bill is over ninety-six thousand, on it, one thousand two forty-eight. If they had a sixteen million dollar less budget, or whatever number it is, maybe twelve and a half, what would their comparison of city taxes be? We're benefiting, I think we need to recognize that, and our citizens need to recognize that, we've, we've got a real benefit here with the volunteer fire department. What I'm trying to do is relate that impact from Troy's nine hundred and eighteen dollar tax bill to a city that has a full-time fire department, back that out and say, what would their tax bill be if they didn't have a volunteer fire department? Because that means you've got money to spend on other things.
There's, if I may, and not to be argumentative, but there's a lot, there's a lot of nuances in a statement like that, even in our state. But, you know, we're looking at this holistically, you know, what does someone have to write a check for, for the services they receive? If you go to Madison Heights, I think Madison Heights has the Act 345, and Sterling Heights may have that as well. And that act means that there is inherent in their charter a provision to have the automatic military increase to cover the legacy costs for police and fire departments. I think Madison Heights is four mils, almost half of our entire military rate, if you will, and I'll verify it for the next meeting, but I think Madison Heights has four military or four military points, if you will, to take care of their, oh, look at this.
I've got it.
Divided militaries. Thank you.
Four point?
Madison Heights, yeah, yeah, fire, police pension, four point oh nine five. That's almost half our entire military rate. In Madison Heights, half of that military rate would go for police and fire pension. So that's another example that, that we don't have. Let's see, they have a, well, they've got neighborhood road improvements, there's differences of rates for debt service. In Troy, our military rate has four components. It has a general operating component, a general capital component, refuse, and debt service. And that's all she writes on that. In Troy, that's all you pay for. Other cities have, some have a district library, where it's a separate military distinct from their, their city military. We don't, if we had a library, it would be part of our military. So there's certain nuances that other cities have that we don't have. We have certain nuances that they don't have. We thought the best way to make a comparison would be, if you live in a house that's worth, has an asset value, say, at a hundred thousand dollars, what do you pay to taxes in Troy? What do you pay in Madison Heights? Madison Heights has a, you know, a huge legacy cost for their pension systems, we don't. They pay for that. We have a break on volunteer fire, fire departments. Other cities have a break by having a district library. Other cities don't have a district library. And so we thought we'd have just a discussion in terms of a paycheck approach. What are you going to pay to the city to live there? You pay two hundred bucks less in Troy than any other city, regardless of the services you get.
Congressman, how are they?
Yeah, and just to be fair, I think it would be good to have Bloomfield Hills on these charts, and then people can, can have a, all of the local communities to care us to.
May I present a question?
Perhaps, in terms of the full services, Mr. Manager, Bloomfield Hills wasn't on there, because again, the library, they don't have a library. This time, we still have a library, and in your approach, it was writing a check to receive services. Fire would be included in that, even though, you know, it was great that we had the volunteer, but when I'm writing for my taxes, I'm receiving water, sewer, library at this point, and fire, police, all of that refuse included. So I think it's an apples-to-apples thing, I'm not sure that Bloomfield Hills, even though they're local, has the same range of services that we currently have.
That's a good point. There are, there's other forms of government too. There are townships, villages. Essentially, a township is an extension of the county, which is an extension of the state, the city is a home rural city. Villages fall somewhere in between, and oftentimes, the slate of services are identified with that type of government.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break.